What was allocated for the buildings initially?
Well, you know, the bid was eighty-eight thousand five hundred twenty-five dollars and some odd cents. Then these change orders are definitely going to change that amount of money for the end result of that. But we do have the thumbs between the USDA and the SCADA side. It will not, it will not affect the counties.
Will it take away from like emergency repair and all other...
Well, we're gonna have to have, we're gonna have to make up that money. You know, if you had planned on contributing, say, five thousand dollars to each one of these projects of USDA money, then you're gonna have to, now you're looking at contributing eighty-nine thousand dollars to one project in order to get that done.
Basically, Madison's is got way more.
They're, I mean, they're down. They're, you have no choices, but it's something that we can't determine.
Okay.
That's right.
What I'm looking at here, the price on the one on Morpheus Street is fourteen thousand four hundred ninety-one dollars sixty-nine cents. And then the other one on Frank is nine thousand three hundred sixty-nine sixty-two. And then the quantity of demolition is about six hundred feet.
Yes, that was to fill in. But the change order...
Now, we're getting the numbers. I was understanding this three and six and eights.
That's for three and six.
I wasn't touching out this.
No, you're looking at three thousand and what is the change order amount on that?
Eighty-two ninety-nine.
Okay, and then the twelve fifty. Those, those are change orders that were not figured when, when this bid was...
So the twenty-three thousand plus the twelve fifty is not the accurate figure you're asking to be changed? Like he said, there's one for nine thousand three hundred sixty-nine sixty-two.
No, 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 no. It's, it's the change order amount, three thousand one seventy-two eighty-three hundred and fifty dollars on the demolition, and then the eighty...
So ninety-four ninety-eight?
Eight thousand some odd dollars on, on Morpheus Street. Whatever those totals are, that's what you're looking at as being a difference in this, in this process of counting.
Okay. What are these other numbers?
That is the amount of work that he's done. That's in his bid. That'll be deducted from his bid amount.
Okay.
Okay, does that make sense?
That's what it's told today.
Okay.
That's, that's total as of that.
These are not change orders.
No, only, only where it says change order.
Right.
Number one, footings extra, three thousand one hundred seventy-two dollars on the receivable.
How second the motion?
All right, look at this argument. Is it failed for motion? We have any motion?
I don't think there's a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further question or comment? All approved. All opposed? Okay, good. Joan, thank you very much.
I have a question.
Yes.
Give me some direction. What you want me to do? I don't anticipate any more change orders, none, zero. But just like today, I have a phone call. There is a request for five things. The wall moon, make sure that I get two handicap promotes, like to have a door in my bedroom, and I want a back porch, and I want a wire drum porch.
Yeah. Think we're doing it like it's bid.
The indication that I've given the builders is, is that, look, the, we understood that there was a possibility of a change order when digging the footings. You know, he had no idea that he was gonna have to get an engineer whenever he bid that job.
We didn't want to go all the way.
But there, there's, you know, as far as that goes, this is the house that was bid. This is the layout. This is what, you know, it's just like he called me the other day, and he said, "Look, man, instead of bidding a three-type machine, well, I'll bid an architectural machine," which is why it's a machine with one of three types. I said, "Well, put the architect on it. It's a better machine, but it ain't costing any money." So it's, it's being well taken care of, and I don't anticipate any additional change orders.
See, my problem is not with change orders. My problem is not nobody...
The procedure.
Yeah, that's the deal.
Tell me what you want. Do you want me to call Kim, Brad?
What's the perfect scenario, Mr. Manager?
Being, you know, the circumstances, it would certainly help us to know that, you know, additional change orders like adding a door, things like that, building a bigger deck, to be able to convey and say, "Look, this is the house that was bid. This is the house that we're building." Because those are extra change orders that, that we really need to stay away from because it's, it's...
Well, that's not what the builder even bid. I think they bid, they built what they bid.
Well, there, and you see, it's not the, it's not the builder that's asking it, it's the homeowner.
Well, they asked, no, then.
They are right here.
Exactly.
Probably couldn't have been held. But what I would like, what I would like, and what I think that these other boys and girls on the board would like to see are old women.
Oh, man.
You ask for that. Is you go to him or her, and they call us.
That's right.
And we certainly blindside you, like we have to seemingly, and discuss this for thirty minutes or hour, whatever we could have been through a long time ago. And they send the plan to the house whenever you went to them and told them to take out the house, right?
They did. They actually got the pick from three different houses.
There you go.
That's it.
And that's, that's what I wanted to point out, too.
That's not me, that's just...
Any change will be at their experience as far as I'm concerned.
And I have told them that.
Because we've been over the backers to give them a place.
After the house is finished, as far as I'm concerned, I think the builder will build just like they said they would.
Unless they want to pay the owner. That's always an option, but they can't figure it out and go back to us.
Not the contractor that we have. Let somebody else, let somebody else to do what everybody might want to do. This contractor doesn't need to be bothered with this person or whoever it is saying, "I want to this, and I want to that. You need to do this, and you need to do that." You tell them, "Bill, I asked them specs," and it's nothing.
That, that's the indication that I've given the builder. I appreciate the backing.
Make that one down now. The contractor gets a set of plans.
Right, right.
Let that contractor build exactly what those drawings show. We've got a county inspector back there. That's his duty and his obligation to inspect the house. They be patient. The contractor does what the plan's called for. When it's finished, pay the contractor and move on, unless the property owners, "If I don't like it, then give it to somebody else."
Well, you know, it's, it's a good program.
I would be too. What's that guy?
I would be too.
Or what will be?
But I've done this, and there's some people not saying that y'all have them, but I have worked in some places that you can't give somebody a brand new home. And then they have, you know, it's always more than one. But listen, I appreciate the kind I applaud.
Joan, thank you.
I appreciate it for what you're doing.
Well, I'm trying, and I am so sorry that I didn't...
That's all we have.
It, it won't be, that won't happen again, okay?
All right, great.
All right.
And then we won't be blindsided.
My house.
Thank you.
They can cheer right back.
Bye-bye.
All right, so approval of change orders is done. Bids for the 911 dispatch using emergency 911 funds. We have got the information that's submitted in your packets for the, young Becky, you may have to help me out with some of this information that's probably what they're doing. Let's see, Becky, what was brought to us earlier about this equipment, the 911? There's a history of story.
Yeah. All done and good.
It's all done from one equipment. She put out for bids for three, basically, three pieces of equipment. One is a UPS, and it's a water. It is a three-phase UPS system that'll hold up the whole system.
Three phases?
Mm-hmm.
We got three phases in, I think?
Um, we don't, we have a, I don't know exactly what we have, but it's, I think it is.
Okay.
A ten-minute is thirty-six thousand, a thirty-minute's forty-five thousand. You may have to help me a little bit, Kim, as they submitted. It's CP Electric submitted it, I'd sell the little pillar.
And they caved in at the lowest.
They were low.
Chip Mark is a little bit, caved in at the lower. That's what she recommended.
Carolina.
Uh, CP Electric.
We have, Kim, submitted one for thirty-eight five for a ten-minute and forty-six nine for a thirty-minute. And then there's also one from WCCS for thirty-eight thousand and forty-six thousand. Then also, then there's a radio system. That is a ZTRON console to replace the radio system we already have. Now, we put a new system in. It wasn't the radio system. That was two years ago.
Right.
That's the call center we put in two years ago. This is the radio system. And I had her make sure with the 911 board that these things are all approved. I think we only got one quote. We, so we asked for more than one, we only received one for eighty-nine five for four tax. Of course, we'll get the sales tax back. And then there's also a replacement server, quad four intel, for ninety-six hundred and seven dollars, and I think that's the only, probably got that as well.
I put this in the paper, it'll be there.
Yeah, it was this three hundred newspaper. And as we said, this is all 911 approved, and we're on three nine one one.
What'd you get in that one?
We've got about two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars right now.
All this told is a little off.
Um, let's see, forty-five and nine, yeah, seven, yeah.
I remember this being brought to us. One question that I would have is, you know, have they made selection on the ten, five, twenty, or thirty minute on the APC? You bid.
I don't think she's told me exactly, she hasn't told me which one she would prefer. But I mean, I don't, knowing computer systems, I'd rather have a longer.
And the bids, the bids on these, though, we're based on that, right?
Yes. If we go with a ten-minute, we would pay thirty-six. And thirty-minute, we would pay forty-five.
Well, that kind of leaves it up to us to decide about...
What you're...
Or what does she want?
Well, I think she would, I think larger package.
Yeah, I would, I would say the thirty-minute. I would prefer the thirty-minute if I'm gonna have a system.
And these funds, I mean, these funds have to be spent in this type of equipment. I mean, that's all...
Exactly.
In other words...
It's not county funds.
Right, spend it now, lose it.
All 911 money.
I make a motion, and that's not being county funds.
And plus, it's an upgrade they've been needing for what? I remember...
They've been by a year since we upgraded.
Yeah, radios, we've been needing that upgrade for a while. Of course, like I said, we upgraded the call center two years ago. This is like the next phase in getting the...
Okay.
And, you know, they are still working on some grant money, and I think it's gonna be next fiscal year. Swain Jackson wants to do a grant that they're agreeable to us. Don't tell them to that grant, but they said it'd be next fiscal year before they could write it.
Okay, let's do this one. We have a motion on the floor that we accept the larger UPS system and the others that are bid. We have a second. Any further discussion or comment? Okay, Paul Bridge, all opposed.
Thank you very much. To FYI, the bid for the Hellhead was submitted out throughout county and advertised. That bid wins no wins. Development work is in progress.
Who's willing to try that work?
Iris. Yeah. We're, we're doing it. We've got our Tri-Cell up there, and I'm pretty sure Gavin's probably gonna pull on that, that part.
I think we're done with that part.
Yeah, it's, uh, yeah, it's all. Next for the board to approve in full session is the polls that have been taken. And do you want me just to read through these, or do you want...
Yes, please to record, read the poll, what we're voting on.
I mean, I guess what I'm asking is, do you want to approve all of these at once or in the...
We could do it once, but we need to make record of what these are.
Yes, sir, absolutely. First one is Florida Park Senior Center, made on April eighth. Second is open, the September Seating Station of the County, once again, on March twenty-fourth. Turbine control here at the ESS Building on March twenty-sixth. Call for hiring a full-time dispatcher on March twenty-seventh. And the settlement on Diller versus Gruden County Sheriff, March twenty-eighth.
So many.
All right, we have a motion, but we have a second. We have a second. Any question or comment on this? All approved, all opposed? I'd like to talk about dispatcher permission, both through, I wanted to, with...
Is that what happened?
We still have a part time available. I don't think she's fired. She's gonna offer that one girl.
Yeah, okay.
The four, the late?
The one that was leaving, been late.
Yes. Changed her mind, which saved us money seeing them at school.
Did she give a part time to the other one?
It's history. All right, next, we need to set the meeting budget for the budget hearings. Proposal was May nineteenth through May thirtieth. Realize there's some special conflicts in the mail there. I know the twenty-eighth, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, or twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, Commissioner R. I. are going to Raleigh with the NCA ACC summit.
I will not be able to do a stand.
And you're not going to a team?
No.
And if any other board members are interested in going, let us know so we can get that...
I don't want to be in the team.
You can go, Ray.
The, so we're pulling this together, and I think we've got a holiday in there.
They're not till...
You don't got time for that.
Yeah, twenty-second. But you can say it'll start at the nineteenth, you can get done that week.
They're talking about twenty-three days, and they want that not up there. I think we gotta tell that's my anniversary, too.
The last week, the last week.
Well, we'll learn.
Okay.
What's your date?
Twenty-first.
I haven't been doing that long yet, because I have to do a public hearing.
My birthday.
At the, at the budget length, ten days, so I'm backing up, trying to get this going as well.
Okay, Becky, I know this is probably an unfair question, but you know, the software that you talked about, is that going to be to the advantage of helping us get to a place where we can make those decisions?
It's gonna help me.
About trade?
Yeah, issue. Well, this year, we'll only have two years of data, and it becomes hard. Next year, it'll be more benefit, but it's gonna help me as we go through the process as soon as I can get my IT connection correct. So that as you guys are tweaking numbers, I can just go ahead and have my system and then computer, then we have it in all the spreadsheet, and have a work at hand.
Okay.
And I even make, if you guys talk about compensation or areas that I can play that scenario on.
All right. Do we, have we had many, did you mean, have special appropriations requests? Just in...
We've gotten two or three in so far. We have the school board yesterday, front third.
School board came in, they presented their budget to, to the clerk, and then we had a very good discussion. And their, their budget request is, is the same as last year, only small capital outlay request of thirty-seven five to go in with them, for us to have, go in with them to put our condition in the electric unit.
Okay. I'll just be honest with you, I'm not looking forward to this one at all. And I ain't, no, I ain't, I'm not, I don't wanna be pessimistic, but it's just, there's a whole lot of barriers out there. We're gonna bind ourselves in an ordinance, and then all of a sudden, the whole world calls out, we're gonna compete. And how do you deal with that? How do you go and adjust to tragedy or whatever? I hate to be pessimistic.
Well, that's what I was kind of alluding to earlier, is that I'm gonna go ahead and put as much pessimism in it as I can, so that if we get into the middle and things don't work out, as we hope they will, then it's not me going back to the Roman war.
Because when it comes to the ordinance, we can't have an ordinance, but you're an ordinance system. If this happens, then it's, I mean, we don't have the legislature, I mean, there's none of the legislature, right?
I mean, we don't wanna lowball our revenues too much, because then, and we're not being honest about, or transparent about what we think we're gonna generate as a government. But at the same time, we got several unknowns with the economics, you know, situation that could occur that we need to go ahead and plan for while we're doing the revenue projections. Go ahead and be low in those areas where we're not being, we're not getting nasty surprises two days before the ordinance has to be passed.
Okay, maybe I just expressed it personally.
It's not gonna be an easy...
It's not gonna be an easy process.
Process.
Never, never will it be. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, yes. We have, we got it all squared away about dates and about making sure we have the layout and enough time.
If you start on the nineteenth, if you want to schedule it just that one week. If you need further, you can continue it as the dates allow, and then I'll take you your cutoff date.
And of course, you know, as we get, as I dig deeper and get into more and more, you know, I'm glad, I'm, I'm not gonna hide any facts, I'm just, I'll go ahead and let you guys know, this isn't pretty here, this is not good there, and that's why I was trying to, tonight, to give you some indicators about the health insurance, some of the challenges we're already facing as we go in.
So we're talking about May nineteenth?
It's our ready, ready date anyway.
Right.
If you want to meet a ten, that or...
And then we're talking about any type of workshop on it through the thirtieth?
I will do the twenty-third, and then if we need to go further than there, you can do it as dates allow.
Okay, up to the thirtieth, you don't, you're not gonna tell me about that date?
No, just do it, since everybody are having some disagreements in the dates in the last week, just schedule it right now, or May nineteenth, or May twenty-third.
And two, it works two, Becky, doesn't it? Then if we need a break to catch up, is that we can say that it'll meet this date or not this date?
Yeah.
But we need to set them with that?
Yes, sir.
All right, go ahead, bring up.
No, if that'll work for y'all, we can, do you need a motion?
No, I just have to post it, paper.
Okay, I don't know if you had need to actually, I wasn't sure.
It doesn't really have to be action, though. You just tell me.
Make sure we have a time.
I have to have, I have to have a time.
Okay, so May nineteenth through the twenty-third budget hearings.
Okay.
We're possible days pending.
FYI, on your agenda, you'll say that there's three hundred acre easement in jail bonds in Grant County, it's taken with land conservation. I'm not sure at this point if, if that is put to remove from the tax base yet. I, I don't know if they've got all the proper reasons in place as of yet, that may have.
We need to ask them for that agreement.
Yeah, I already said she did.
She did, she's gonna ask them? You know, she conjectured that it might be twenty-five percent reduced, or down to twenty-five percent by... But I don't know that to be a fact, so we just need to find out. I figured it was forty-five hundred dollars per year, or something like that. I don't know. We just need to find out the particulars on it. And one thing about this right here is there was zero notification from, you know, the land trust. I know, I mean, I understand what we do and have friends in that, except, you know, I had to get a little postcard that said, "Score, S-C-O-R-E." Score.
Land trust just want to do what?
Sorry, sir?
Land trust just want to do what?
They've already taken over three hundred acre property. I believe it's on the Pissawak Creek.
Yeah. Yeah, north of Pissawak Creek.
What, is that the Tennessee thing, same thing?
Yeah, the Little Tennessee River.
I think that we would protest, they're out of state. They don't, they don't have nothing to do with North Carolina. They're Tennessee land trust company, and they don't need a break.
Their, their headquarters are in Mikeham.
Yeah, Franklin. This is the Little Tennessee River.
Land trust.
It just talks about the Little Tennessee River. It's pretty much the catchment area for Little Tennessee.
Yes, sir.
And, I mean, I just, well, you know, if it was a private, private transaction...
Let me ask you, ask you this.
Nothing.
If that conservative could have taxed over that three hundred sixty acres, pays no taxes on it for years and years, the timber grows and raises material. Can that property only go back into our logage again?
Depends on the agreement.
It depends on the interest that they agreed to.
That's just it. I was on that property last week. It blacked dirt in the North Coast. It was logs in twelve to fifteen years. And places where I used to see corn grow, there's potter on it that big, just as thick as it can stand, finding a bunch of young timber I laid mine on. They got ribbons tied up all the way in there. Now, if, if the conservative could control it and save it fifty years, then it goes back to the property owners, they can log it. The county's getting hoodoo big time.
Well, you see, that's, that's the whole nature of conservancy, you know? Either it's gonna be for term, but what tends to happen is that it ends up in the Forest Service's hands. And a lot of times, it's the federal taxpayer dollars that help pay for it, start...
Are they a government identity?
No, no.
I make a motion that we do not give them this, that we, I think, the public don't take ours back.
They, they sold. The, the idea behind the land trust is that they would take funds, they would go in and buy these pieces of property, and then in turn, they would find a buyer, they would put their easements in, you know, whatever land you stipulated they have in the deeds, and find a suitable buyer who was, who will come in and pay them for that property, and so it comes back onto the, onto the tax rolls of the county. Theoretically, that's how it's supposed to set up.
But they never said...
Many times, though, they conveyed that to a non-taxable entity.
I make a motion that we do not cut their taxes in any way.
I, I will have to research what legis, the legisla, the...
If they are not, they are not tax exempt.
Yeah, I mean, there's legislation that's in place that gives them raw authority in these pieces of property.
They are not a government identity, you said. That's the only thing that we have to answer to, is the town, the Forest Service, and the state.
Yes, sir.
Not them.
But, but the state is, has set forth legislation to protect them.
Well, the state paid the tax. This stuff needs to be tried and see what we can do, or they're gonna take over between them and the Forest Service.
I'm not disagreeing.
They're gonna take over, and we need to stand up sometime or another, or they're gonna take us over. The same thing with the golf course on the head of Cleveland. That should be taxed just like it was before they took it over.
One, at one time, it was taxed, it was property.
Yeah.
Two hundred and seventy-six acres. But you know, I can, I can understand, Raymond, where you're coming from. And you've got motion on the floor. You know, but I would want to understand what the conditions of this was. And I believe Raymond's on to something here with regard to, you know, if there is in fact law that governs about the taxable value. Because Irma sat right over there earlier today during our work session and said that, you know, there are terms that they can go with. And it'd be, you know, reduce the value down to, uh, you know, be evaluated at twenty-five percent of value. Now, this was one thing she said, I'm not saying that this property does.
Right.
But then at the same token, you know, Commissioner Holder here says, you know, how is it then, you know, that they can put that in conservancy? And then they can enjoy the twenty-five percent level of evaluation, you know, back. And then turn around and, and the same agreement say that they have right to go in.
And log it.
Right. And then if you're complicated some more, go put that in QV.
Right.
I mean, is that, I don't allow it, I'm surrounding the Forest Service.
Well, I could, I'll tell you the destiny of that. But you have a motion on the floor, and, uh, you know, the effect of, you know, you want to do that. I would recommend, you know, that we can have a look at what this particular agreement says. Because first I realized anything of it, honest to goodness, was a postcard. Was a postcard.
Yeah, that's right. It'd be, it'd be nice, I mean, if we, we had the opportunity to do exactly what Raymond says now, stand against it when, when in fact, it was kept a secret until it was, the land was transferred into conservancy.
And honestly, you know, I, I understand the need for protecting watershed broadly. I understand it.
Water.
You have, you need to take care of it. But the only thing that you know about it is a postcard that says, another score.
Yeah. I don't know that it should protect water.
Well, you see, the thing is, you know, there, there's all kinds of things in it, and I understand, I understand that. But Raymond, uh, for your motion, what is your motion? I mean, to entertain that motion?
I make a motion that we don't do whatever we need to do. Greg knows who we need to do.
Yes, sir.
And disapprove this tax test for them. Either the ones in Franklin or the Tennessee land trust, that their taxes be the same as our people. And not because they're gonna come in here and take over.
So, you, you want a letter to these conservancies denying any, any tax breaks?
Right.
Okay.
And deny, and them not to have any other purchases or...
Transfer.
Transfers in Grand County because of the seventy-two percent already owned or settled in.
Can we legally keep someone from buying property in Grand County? Well, can you legally keep?
They don't like it, give it to them.
Well, they can sell it. The conservancies, the conservancies can buy it. You see, it's complicated. But you know, with your motion there, um, there's a second to the motion. But in that too, you know, it's gonna take some investigation, because if in fact, there's legislation that governs that.
Yeah.
You need to find out.
I've, I've got, I'll probably ask council to help me review that, that legislation, because there's, I mean... We've got a...
I want you to understand what I'm saying.
I do.
Do you? Do you know what's happening?
I know, I first wish I knew what you're talking about.
Hey, listen, I, I don't think anyone's disagreeing. I just gotta make sure that everything that, that I propose is in, in compliance with the statute.
Right. What's the motion there, Ken? Because we have a report. Just remind us the motion, please.
Commissioner Williams wants a letter written, telling them that we are not going to allow any tax breaks to any property that they set theme in the conservancy. And he wants to find out, um, from this, look farther, there are no more purchases or transfers.
Are we done on that?
I hate to get, get personally involved in it. Because I use myself as a good example. I'm sitting over there on seventeen acres of flat land property. If I use it, I've gotta spend a arm and leg and get an engineer to design it before I can do anything. This conservative group moves in, gets free rights, I'm paying full tax valuation on mine. They don't pay no taxes. When it gets personal, the list gets hot.
Well, and it just comes down to it. We can't, we can't afford anymore of that.
Yes, I, I agree.
You know, how far, how far our local governing body can go with it, I guess we'll have to find out.
Yes, sir.
All right, we have a motion, that's read. We have a second, all approved. All opposed. We just pull the tiger's tail, we'll see if he bites his teeth off.
Should we give a vote?
And another thing, it's, it's, it's just, I guess you find out.
Like, we don't try, but in a way we are.
I agree. I agree, sir. Next, uh, we make you aware, tomorrow night, here at the beauty building, from four-thirty to six-thirty, we've got the, uh, opt-in open house for the comprehensive regional plan. And our, our, our comprehensive plan is a transportation plan. So, uh, try to come by, take a look at some of the infrastructure, and definitely provide feedback. It's, it's, uh, we're, we're coming down to the end of this, this process, and it's, it's been a lot of work, uh, for sure. And I would also ask the board commissioners to, uh, put it in your calendar and let me know so that I can get, uh, send out a note of cash for you on May the eighth. There is a, an opt-in summit, we're gonna present the regional plan, and each of the counties are being represented, represented at, uh, in Cherokee, at, uh, at the Harris. I think up there in Cherokee, on the tree.
At the hotel, on the casino.
Yes, sir. At the hotel. So if you are interested in going, they're sending out these invitations, they said they had three hundred seats. Let me know so I can get you registered for that.
Yeah. All the delegation for Grand County, you see, we'll get.
Yes.
They're gonna be doing some more survey, uh, survey work there electronically. Yeah.
You going, sir? Raymond, would you like to go?
Could be sure.
Uh, Commissioner Holder, would you, would you prefer to attend?
I'd attend.
Okay. Commissioner Holder, you're planning on attending, man?
Try.
Okay. Yes, sir. Andy and I are planning on being there, and I have sent out a notification to our towns, uh, for, uh, the elected representation to be there. They asked us to, to pick and choose, and I thought it was best in the county's position to talk with our elected appointees. And I've noticed that they reached out to some of the other, uh, the greater organizations, like that, to get their votes. So, uh, from the county side, Andy and I, Mike and Keith are planning on attending, and I have not heard back specifically from the towns. I do, they did ask us to, to get a corporate sponsorship for this, and I'd like to send out a, a big thank you to Phillips, to York, Franklin. They agreed to be Grand County sponsor in this, and, uh, I, I asked them, and they, they accepted. So it's much appreciated, appreciation, man.
I talked to one of them, said, they said, please, I, that's good. Everybody you can tell, I'll turn it down here tomorrow evening.
Tomorrow night is very important. We're, we're looking and having to come together as a community to make some critical decisions on, uh, on what we are submitting in this plan. And we need to, uh, make sure that all voices are heard.
And Greg too, I know he's been a point of conversation, is that we need to remember that the buck stops here at this board.
Yes, sir.
You know, all plans that would come will have to meet the approval of the board, the governing body of the counties. And Greg's already mentioned it, and I want to just reiterate that. We have to be very careful, do we go through that very carefully?
Yes, sir.
And have a, have a hard look at it to make sure that we're not looking at issues of policy, as Greg mentioned. And not to go and find ourselves agreeing to something in a big vote. By no means do we want to do that. We want to have an understanding about our comprehensive plan, comprehensive transportation. So I hope we'll be able to do that, and then we'll have ample time, if need be, to spend sessions. We're gonna spend session on that, right? And be able to have a conversation about the contents of it.
Yes, sir. I'm gonna give a quick update, and then I'm gonna turn this over to, uh, Commissioner Holder. I think I know what he's, what he's talking about, so he can.
I believe that property has been closed, in this case.
Is it contracted? Property, it is property.
It is, it would be, yes, that may be closed out. The new ambulance, uh, has got the red stop on it, goes to quality control May fifteenth. So hopefully, we're gonna be seeing that early June for the new truck. I am trying to get with, uh... Yes, sir. This one on, on another Chevrolet chassis. The, uh, ambulance itself has said that they have several boxes in, and we're looking at another remount, another vehicle next year. I told him that I've, I've gotta get, I better get a player to say sort of what the timeframe is. I, I don't want to commit to buying one too early in, uh, in the next budget year, uh, just to see what, how all that works out. But, uh, he is, he is ready. Of course, we'll send out RFPs like we always do. But, uh, that's, uh, that's where it's at. The truck will be here for long. Ambulance, yes, ma'am.
We're gonna do our own business?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, I, I think I've talked to all the commissioners individually at some time or other about, Greg and I were at, at a meeting in Raleigh the first time Governor McCroy came in. He'd just been put into office.
Yes, sir.
And one of the things that he said, as he talked, was that he'd never been a county commissioner. And I know we have a lot of changes going on in Raleigh, but, but one of the things that I thought about, and spoke with a little lady who was, uh, part of his staff, over at the school, when he brought in the computers, was about Corrin County making the governor an honorary county commissioner. And maybe present him with a plaque when we go down on the twenty-eighth of May. And I, uh, Kim has let me know that we did not vote on that, so I'll bring that up.
Okay. We're still open for business. Do we have a motion? Do you put that in?
I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
There's a second? All right, any further discussion, comment? You all approved?
I'd like to. And all the people that has lost their sign, uh, went from three hundred and seven dollars to a hundred dollars, so he can go and buy groceries and that. I'm totally engaged.
Well, I think that we can reach out to him and get some kind of relationship going with him, or his administrative positions, to talk to him about that type of thing. That's just my view of it.
Any other question, comment? Do we have a motion? We have, we have a second? They all approved? All opposed? Passes. John's hundred, John's signatures, all board on these? All board members?
I think five.
And will there be a different kind of certificate?
Yeah.
It'd look different.
If that's okay, the way that looks.
Not really.
No, I mean, the wording.
The wording's fine.
Yeah.
Okay. Do what now? Three, two.
Three, two.
Good passing. Okay. All right. We need to break. I did it. Do we have a motion? No, I'm sorry, any other, older, new business? All right, may I have a motion, please? We go into closed session under GS one forty-three, three eighteen, one one A, one three six. Rules of confidential information, attorney, fine, proven, personnel, contrary. In this case here, it will be proper.
Same.
All right, have a second, all approved?
Five minutes worth.
We're at five minutes, three, six. Please.